The regular city council meeting for Monday, March 14th, 2022. If we could please recite the Fledge of Allegiance.
Our Fledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Holly, will you call the roll, please? Lanning?
President.
Pratt?
Here.
Ballinger?
Here.
Siebel?
Here.
Reins?
Here.
Gilroy?
Here.
Hanson?
Here.
And I am looking for approval of this evening's agenda. And do I support? And all those in favor, say aye. Ayes opposed? All right, that carries. Next, we have an opportunity for audience participation with a maximum of five minutes per presentation. Is there anybody that would like to come forward at this time? No, moving on. We have our council meeting minutes for February 28th, 2022. I'm looking for a motion to approve those unless there's a change that needs to be noted.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
Thank you. Do I have support?
Support.
Thank you. All those in favor? Say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, that carries. Next, we have accounts payable. Noah, did you have an opportunity to review those?
Yes, I did. And I did have a chance to talk to Rachel this morning. As I reviewed these, the report was run, but we found, I found that there was a check number 75344 for the state of Michigan dated 3/4/2022, which is on the page three, was actually voided. But it ran in the report, but when I called her, because there was no matching documentation, she said that I would be allowed to subtract that from total. So the new total comes up to 240, 104.35. So everything else checked and matched. So I'm asking that we approve checks 75281 dated 2/25/22 through check 75347 dated 3/4/22, and ACH 226 through 236, and voiding check 75344 dated 3/4/22 for $8,786.37. So the new total net would be 240, 104.35. That's my motion.
Thank you so much. That was very thorough, and I appreciate you going into that detail and getting a hold of Rachel. Does anybody have any questions regarding our accounts payable this evening? If not, I'm looking for support.
Support.
Thank you, Terry. Holly, will you call the roll for accounts payable, please? Siebel?
Yes.
Reins?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Lanning?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Ballinger?
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, well, we are onto our action items. And this is our first full council with our new city manager. So I'm very happy and pleased that we could all be here this evening. We just have three action items on our list. The first is the digital message board location and construction. And Mr. Hannipin, our city manager, has put together a memo for us. So I'll go ahead and turn that right over to you.
Thank you, Mary. Gilroy, members of council. At our last meeting, we had a presentation from a group of community members for the proposed message board, three located at the Cormick Park. And I know that the city Williamson and that group has been talking about this for a while. I know there was some reasoning that was necessary to change messaging on all signs, not just this one. So that leads us to tonight. Council's asked to approve the construction and installation of the digital message board sign immediately behind and above the current McCormick Park sign located at the border of Putnam and High Streets. Should we, should you as a council approve the construction location? The partner resolution that goes along with that is the policy. The policy, in a sense, is probably equally important as the location of the sign. Mr. Peron can talk, speak more to that when we get to that item. So I did include a little bit of background. I know most of you are pretty thoroughly aware of the effort and the considerations of how the sign was proposed to that location. You know, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have about that or that process. I know there's a couple of members from the community there as well. Couple of things I did add. Staff was asked to look at what the potential operating costs were for the sign. And really primarily, that'll be electricity. And signs of this size use anywhere from 500 bucks to about $1,000 annually in electricity. There's a pretty good website that actually calculated that for us. As far as the actual messaging, that was one of the other considerations, too, is who does the actual messaging? And if you think about, we processed one, or I did, just this earlier, or late last week, for a sign permit, to have a sign there. And so the process to update this on a weekly or monthly basis, I don't really anticipate that being a huge deal for our staff to do that. But because we are partnering into this with the school and in the Chamber of Commerce, I think it's important that they have access to update the sign as well. And that way, we get some redundancy in the case that, you know, for whatever reason, we weren't, we aren't able to do that here in the city. Finally, because this is a fundraising effort, and because the discussion last point was, this is pretty common for things in the parks when a community group pays a donation of a, you know, of a thing like a gazebo or something like this, they raise the money on the front end, and it's really the city's responsibility to carry the cost moving forward. So I think it's important to include in the fundraising effort at least $1,000 in the event that something was to happen to the sign. I think that's a good number. We talked about this a little bit last time, but, you know, the sign itself, it's pretty hearty. You know, if it gets smacked by equipment or something like that, and, you know, it'd be covered by insurance. But if there's a lightning strike or something like that, whether it's the LEDs or the circuit board, I think $1,000 would cover the cost for that.
One question that I would have then, just as you were mentioning that, John, and we know that insurance would cover it if it was something that was catastrophic. Do we know what the warranty is at the time of installation? Is there a warranty on it for a year, 18 months?
Five years covers everything.
Yeah.
Five years.
Five-year warranty?
Everything.
Okay, awesome. Thank you very much, and thanks for being here. Any questions? Dan?
I would, I'd personally like to see that $1,000 operating contingency fund raised a bit because my wife is a teacher in Lansing, and they actually just put one of these signs in, and obviously, we have a five-year warranty. So their warranty must have been less, but they've actually had a power issue with it already. And now it's sitting there, can't be used, and they're trying to find the funds to fix it. And I don't know exactly what their cost is, or, obviously, they're getting a different sign, but we feel like if it was $1,000, they would probably be fixing it in the priority done. So I'd like to see that brought up a little bit. And even, even if it sits there for 10 years or whatever, this sign, it's a beautiful $37,000 piece of equipment that we're putting in there. If 10 years from now, something happens to it, we want to make sure we have the money to take care of that.
All right, what would, what would be your entertainment of a higher amount than $1,000?
You know, is...
Do you want to do like 1,500, 2,000? What would be...
Do we think $2,000 would be fair? I think, you know, you should be able to do most...
And if it's something we're not, you know, hopefully, the warranty is, you know, bumper to bumper for five years? And hopefully, we wouldn't have to touch that?
If you, you know, if you have a power outage or lightning strike or whatever, which it's not hit by a plow, if it's, you know, something, something like that, you fry a motherboard in it, whatever, you should be able to repair. I don't, I don't know what the total, total cost of, we've got a breakdown here, but of the component parts and labor of what it is, replacing stuff.
Well, I can just help a little bit, like, repeated last week, Dan wasn't here, but Watchfire is the number one top of the line. It's the top of the line, and there's a lot of cheaper ones out there. And they put in 60 in the last 20 years. There's only been two maintenance items. A fan, which was $200, and a circuit board, which was $400. Out of 20 years. So that's a good record to me.
That is a very good record. I just know we're spending a lot of money to put it in, and I would hate to, any, I'm not saying within a short window here, I'm saying five, six years, but eventually, something's going to happen with this thing. And if we've got the money on the front end that it's taken care of, we don't, we don't have to worry about it, or we're not trying to figure out.
I don't think we could look into it, we never did. That's a good question, Dan, is, is can you extend that warranty for a small amount over another five years and so on and so on?
Sure.
That makes sense.
That would be worth asking, and I don't know the answer, but that's a really good question.
If even a circuit board is only $400, then, golly, $1,000 should cover, I think, everything just about.
Well, if it's covered under warranty, we may not have to use that money. That money is just going to be kind of sitting there in a pot for extenuating circumstances that would not be covered under warranty, is what I'm understanding. Or covered under insurance if something were to happen. So Noah just did a quick calculation. If we did 10% of the total cost, that would be 3,700. I don't know if we need to have that high of an amount. I would be comfortable with a 1,200 or 1,500, knowing that we've got a warranty, we've got insurance, so...
I like the 1,500, man, myself. It's bigger than the 1,000, maybe I think 1,500 is fair.
Okay.
Hey, that covers three circuits.
No, yeah, somebody...
Then you got labor.
Plus, who's the labor?
Well, that's that, too.
Harder one thing, you got labor.
Scott, when we have a project, why doesn't the normal contingency fund, that's kept aside for agencies like that, when you bid a project?
When you, well, when you bid a project, you put usually a 10% contingency on the construction. But you're talking about something that's post-construction. And it sounds like you're coming to a number that might be closer to 5%.
Yeah, okay. All right, Tim?
Yes, this proposed motion doesn't authorize any expenditures. And so, and maybe it's a technicality, but I think there needs to be clarification. I see that the estimate is in the name of the city. Does that mean that the city is going to pay for this, perhaps with donated funds? So are the funds going to be donated to the city, and the city is going to have to then authorize the expenditure? Or is the group going to purchase the sign and pay this bill, and then transfer ownership to the city?
That is a great question. And we know that with the Friends of the Williamson Park, they, it's a pass-through. We order everything, they forward the funds to us, correct? And then, and then we have ownership of it, so what do you...
Give me the best analogy.
Yeah.
Their Volunteers Playground was totally done that way.
Yeah.
They just basically, the city orders it, they get a government discount, they get no tax, and it's on their property.
Yeah.
And then they just go to city check.
Do we need to have that in writing then, Tim, or modify this action?
What I would suggest is that you then, the signs approved, the construction and installation, authorize the expenditure of up to the maximum amount that you want to come through, and make that expressly contingent upon 100% of that amount being donated funds.
Okay. And I see Brandon Lanning is writing all of this down. He's usually my go-to guy for these complicated actions to make the motion. And I see on the back of the invoice, the total is $29,414. So we could do a not to exceed, just in case.
And they don't include any sales tax.
Correct.
I know it says something about that, but I don't think that they added it in there. And that would only be if the city was purchasing.
Right, and I'm going to go to John here real quick, because he had his hand up.
Yeah, so, thank you, Mary, you're right. So the other consideration, and this was talked a little bit about the last time, and it wasn't clear from, you know, the estimate, that the cost for mon-electricity to the sign? There is a cost for that. Again, with the expectation that the fundraising effort is, you know, going to raise all the funds.
Right.
I mean, I guess with respect to Mr. Peron, I would hold off on like putting a dollar limit to this, because they have to raise the money first. And so, you know, we can authorize, you know, the receipt of funds up to amount, but it's, we're going to have to expend it anyway.
Well, what we're talking about is the purchase.
Right.
And the construction and installation. Once you have an asset that belongs to the city, it's yours.
Right.
And you got to pay for the maintenance, repair, and operation of it at that point. So I don't think that we have to necessarily account for the electricity cost to operate it
Right.
necessarily in this motion, but I do think that you have to...
My comments were about the installation of electricity.
Right.
Not the...
Oh, oh. That's still listed as zero.
That's more.
Right.
Do we have an idea of how much that will cost, the installation of the electricity to the sign?
Yeah, that was, that's a good one. That was my next thing, too.
Let's, let's check with Scott. Scott, have, because you're going to have to, you would probably run electricity from the restroom area, where that back room is at, where there's the electrical panel?
I believe that's a possibility. There's another possibility that we have to check into is another empty conduit run that comes from the light that's in the island in the parking lot.
Okay.
But I don't know if it can sustain that, because that's all fed from the concession stand.
Okay.
So it depends on the wiring and so forth. The closest thing I can come to is we had to relocate and run some new conduit and new wire for the Boardwalk project last year, and we spent over $3,000 doing that stuff.
Okay.
So just to give you an idea of what it could cost, but I don't, I really haven't checked into this.
Okay.
Would this require kind of the parking lot to run electricity if you went from the island?
I don't believe so, but you're probably going to have to have somebody shoot something underneath the concrete, unless you want to replace concrete.
Right.
Unless we can make that conduit run work. But you still have to get across the concrete by where the sign is, because that has like a walk that kind of encompasses the whole sign.
Right, yeah, that encompasses it. So would it be safe to say that we could do this motion to at least get the purchase of the sign? Because I'm sure they don't have one sitting on some showroom floor. It's going to take a while. Do we know what the lead time is?
It's a custom structure.
Yep.
Which is a lot of the cost. You know, the panel itself is a fixed amount.
Right.
But the custom structure is what blends in nice with our sign, blah, blah, blah. You know, that's all custom metalwork, so...
Do we know what the lead time would be on that, when you were having discussions with them? If we were to put this order in?
No, we do not.
Okay. Dan?
So I, are we anticipating DPW doing the electrical work to get, no?
We'd have to probably bid it out?
Has to be done by electrician.
That was my thought, because we were asking Scott, and I was thinking, I figured this had to be an out-of-house deal. Are we, I'm assuming we're going to be asking them to fundraise for that amount, too? Because we didn't budget, we didn't budget for that, right?
Yes. So we could always have that as a next action item.
So I guess at this point, my, I mean, going off of what Tim said, I agree that we probably need to have that language in there, but to get the process moving, if that's the intention for us tonight,
Yes.
is to have the language put in there, but specifically say, at the end of installation, authorize expenditure for the purchase of the digital message board sign of whatever the number ends up being, 100% contingent on donation to the city. That way, you can get the ball moving, we'll get the purchase, and then we'll have to, we'll have to get a pre-approval
Right.
from us again, when we figure out how much it's going to cost installation-wise. I mean, I think that's the best way.
I'm comfortable with that. What about the rest of the council, are we comfortable? Okay?
I think that's the best. Or does that motion work, Tim?
Yeah, it was, I'm sorry, John, it wasn't crystal clear. We're talking about electrical, that you're going to have to run electrical service to the exact location.
Right.
And yeah, that's going to be a construction and installation cost.
But what, what we can do is, if we move on this, now we can take these plans with the schematics or get that information from the sign maker, put together a bid to send out for an electrician, and then we can have that on a future agenda item, so that would be...
And even before that, as I understand it, what you're looking for is the city to say, we like this idea, and then you can start the fundraising.
We have mostly all winks, nods, and, yeah, we'll help.
Right, but not...
But that's not even worth pursuing if we don't have, can't even do it.
No signatures and no, okay, yeah.
Dan?
I'll be honest, until we hear from electrician, because what I'm hearing from Scott is we have some conduit that we may be able to use, but we may not be able to use. And if we can't use it, how we get the electrical to there could mess with some concrete, some other things in that parking lot, and that's a, it's a small cut, but then we could run into more maintenance issues in there. I, maybe I'm being the giant stickler, but I'd like to hear what we have to do for that before I approve construction. And I, I think that's kind of fair, to know what all that's going to encompass before we give permission for construction on the sign. If we're to approve it, I think we add another note to Brandon Chee for his motion, and make it contingent on the fundraising efforts, including the cost of electrical installation to the sign. I mean, we'll make it contingent however you...
We could make it contingent on that, but like I said, I think we've got to, if we're going to have Scott put a bid out to have an electrician come in, we have the information, it's almost like hand in hand. He can take this and have, you know, and it could be contingent on. You could start raising funds, or get those approvals, those yeses. And if a bid comes back that says, wow, it's going to be $15,000 to put that in, then you guys would know what additional funds would be necessary. Or you may scrap and say, gosh, we can't do $15,000 on top of $30,000 for the sign.
Well, it says in their proposal that does not include running electricity to that site, because every site's different, you know, they can't bid on that.
Yeah.
So we can get what their draw is, whatever the electrical stuff is that Scott would need to know, that they can tap to here or tap to there without it being a big problem. But we don't even know that.
Right.
But it was always assumed that this, this funding would cover the cost, not the city.
I understand. My concern is if the conduit cannot be used, and then we start having to do demo to concrete or going from the island, we've then, we've then compromised the structure of that. And even, patches are great, but a patch is never as good as what we already have. Go ahead, Scott.
Dan, to address what your concern is, I think very likely, the most logical location for the conduit run is going to be like the back of the curb, right into the garden space, but as close to the curb as possible, because, you know, you don't want to disturb the gardens and stuff like that. So the vast majority of it will be able to be done that way.
Okay.
There'll be some crossings of the concrete walk, either in one or two locations. One, you have to cross by the existing concrete, you know, the Cormick Park sign, because that, that walk goes around the whole thing. So we're going to have to get underneath that to get to that garden space. In your council packet is a photo that they included that kind of looked on where those signs are.
Yeah.
It'd be kind of the back side of those signs, close to the curb, probably. Or the other side would be the sidewalk side, and that would probably keep it closer to the curb. And once you, we would either intercept that existing conduit about halfway up the garden space, because it crosses right through the garden.
Okay.
Or if we can't do that, you would just keep on going and probably go north towards, there's a big, a very big green transformer that's mounted between the existing bathroom building and the concrete walk that comes from Putnam Street
Yep.
along the north side of the parking lot. So that would have, there are companies that can shoot conduit more successfully.
We've had to have some of that done at the cemetery for water lines.
Yep.
You know, if that's the, if we need to have that done, that's the best way possible.
You have a very valid concern, but I think, because John and I walked over there, and I talked with him about some thoughts on the things.
Okay, good. If you, if you're comfortable with it, then we can do it with minimal, or not, you...
Not 100%, but fairly comfortable. There's a pretty good probability you can do it without getting into the asphalt.
Okay. All right. All right, with that being said, and that's all very good discussion, because, yeah, we don't want to disrupt everything over there and have a bigger job on our hands than what we're intending. I'm looking for that motion, or...
I need to know whether we're intending on the contingency to be on the funding for the message board, the funding and the installation.
John and Tim, would you be comfortable with that?
I think we should include the installation as a contingency as well.
Okay. And then, Noah, you would imagine something?
I was just going around, I love this whole idea, but I'm still uncertain on how the board's actually going to be managed.
I think that's the next, the next action item.
That would be the next motion, but I think it's going to talk about that, what we approve funding for, right? I agree. I mean, that's one of the things that I was, I mean, because you had mentioned that city would do it, and share with the school district, and share with the Chamber of Commerce. I mean, that seems kind of broad. I mean, if it was the school board and the city, maybe, but...
Well, I just know the amount of work that I do and tracking things for the school district side I do to clean that, it's going to take a lot of time to update that board on a very inconsistent basis, because there's a lot of entities that use it.
Well...
And I don't want to overburden the internal staff with that, so that's just a concern.
I would like to go ahead and finish up one action item before we go to our next action item, which is what we're going to talk about, the board policy, so, absolutely, so...
The policy, yeah.
So Brandon, would you read your motion, please?
Sure. I'll make a motion to approve the construction and installation and authorize the expenditure, oh, I guess I need to remember first. The expenditure for the purchase of the message board sign, not to exceed $29,414. Is that sort of number? Contingent on donation provided to the city for the purchase of the message board sign and the installation of the message board sign immediately behind and above the current Cormick Park sign located at the corner of Putnam and High Street.
Thank you for that, I appreciate it.
Can I ask for a friendly amendment?
Yeah.
Are you sure you mentioned a $1,500 contingency for repairs? Can that be included?
I thought we weren't going to...
We weren't going to that, that was...
Because we have that in our house anyways.
Right.
Right, I think.
Just clarifying.
Yep. All right, thank you, and thank you for that. Do I have support for the motion, then, Brandon? All right, thank you, Terry. Any other further discussion before I call for the roll? Okay, Holly, will you call the roll, please? Reins?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Lanning?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Ballinger?
Yes.
Siebel? Okay. Now, to get, get onto the policy, which I think is a very, you know, we do definitely have some concerns. And I think that Noah just brought it up. I want to share a little bit of how Lansing Community College operates. We have big boards in all of our buildings. And there's software that you can log into. You can upload your message, you can pick the date, the time, how long that message is going to be running for. I'm assuming that this board comes with some type of software.
Comes with total program and training.
Okay. Does it allow for multiple users to be able to log in and update the messaging?
I don't know that, because everyone I've talked to only has one.
One user.
One user.
Okay. So I think that's something that we would want to find out, in addition to this policy that we're going to kind of talk through and walk through. And is it secure? And can we have multiple, so that the burden isn't completely on a city staff member? And that it's a shared, it's a shared activity, whether it be through the school district? And I like what you said, too. How many people are we really going to allow to touch it and put messages on it? And what is that process, so?
My only thought on that was just because we specifically mentioned last time that we need to restrict this to being governmental speech, because we don't want this to be expansive and then get people saying, well, you didn't allow me to say it.
Correct.
And so my, my only concern with the Chamber of Commerce aspect of it was, okay, so then what does Kiwanis say? Okay, so then what does this next group say? Because we allow the chamber to do it, why can't my organization do it?
Right.
Like, it might not properly do it. So I mean, that's my only thought. I'm not necessarily like heartstrung on getting rid of it, but that's kind of where my head went at.
Absolutely.
My extension on that is, you allow the Chamber of Commerce, the Kiwanis say, we want to do it, too. You say, no, no, we're just a commerce, just a Chamber of Commerce. Then the Kiwanis sue the city. Is there some sort of, is there a general umbrella kind of policy that says if the city is sued, there's insurance that covers it up, that takes care of that?
Tim, go ahead.
Well, the city does have insurance if you're sued for a civil rights violation.
That would be this sort of thing.
Yes, but that's what we're also talking about, is that you're not creating a public forum.
Correct.
No one has the right to put a sign up on the front of City Hall.
Correct.
And they wouldn't have a right to put a sign up on the city's message board either, unless you opened it up to the public, and then you have to then open it to the public, And then you have to then open it to the public regardless of the message that they want to put on there.
You can't open it to some, but not to others.
Correct.
And yeah, the chamber is one thing, but individual members are excluded.
Right. And I think, you know, the picture that was included in the packet was the sidewalk with all of the different signage, sandwich boards that we're trying to not necessarily eliminate from downtown, but we're trying to give them one spot where they can publicize, not, you know, we're never gonna get away from all of that unless we create a policy that says no signage in the downtown area. And it has to be, you know, can't be in the right way, can't visually impair something, line of sight. So, I think that's, you know, we do have to have a policy that if somebody were to come forward and want to put signage on there, what is allowed, what is not allowed? And then also who is responsible for refreshing the sign, putting the new messages out on the sign? Dan?
So, reading through this, we've got a bunch of different entities within the city that would be able to put their messages on the sign. But basically, there's three different groups from priority ranked up top. But then down here lower, the second to last bullet point, it talks about how messages can be walked into city hall, have to be written. And I guess I'm trying to figure out if it's only these three entities, chamber of commerce, school, the city, who's walking messages in? Is that the Kiwanis? Is that the Lions?
So, this, this, thank you, Mayor Gilroy. So, this gets right to the, the heart of like the message board sign and why, you know, predominantly these are on school property, frankly, because as Mr. Peron said, and it's in a little background narrative, groups like Kiwanis Rotary won't be allowed to use the sign. They won't. Because then, then you're, they're, they're correct, they're non-topic groups. Now, if there's a community-wide event that, that they're maybe partner of, that's one thing. But you, you can't, you can't use to advertise that Sunrise Rotary is seven-thirty on Tuesdays. You can't do that. So, it has to be, so then it gets back to like, you know, the management of the sign and knowing that there's, there's a sign now for musical, for the school, there'd be, I'm sure there would be a message for, for tonight's regional basketball games. Things like those are okay. Things like the Jubilee, I mean, that's a community-wide event. So, but individual groups are, can't use the message board sign.
So, the walk-in would be a group that has a citywide event that's requesting that the city would then sponsor that one as a. That's what that would be, it would not be. So, then I guess my thought would be, I know this runs a little counter to what Brandon was saying earlier, but if we have three different entities here who all have a lot of different events, my thought would be if it's possible with the software and whatnot, that each group is then responsible for updating their own events. So, then it's, if it's a school event and the school has fifteen things they want to put on there, it would be school staff updating it. And if the city has, you know, whatever they want, the city would be updating, the chamber would be updating. Then it's not all on city staff with walk-ins to figure it out.
Okay, clarify a couple of things. There's never any spoke talk about chamber of commerce in this equation. Cause then you're getting into private, private advertising.
That's why we're talking about.
And they're, they can't even afford their employee right now, let alone sponsor much of anything. And so, all the entities were asking for money that want to give the money are the Kiwanis clubs.
The service organizations.
The service organizations, the nonprofits, you know, the garden club, you know, blah, blah, blah. You know, that's, that's, that's who wants to give the money.
Right.
They don't want to give money for something that is for private advertising. Private advertising has their own venues. The whole point is that those groups don't have a venue. And that's, that's the, that's what's driving the whole thing. And the other entities, I've asked if they have written policies and they said, no, I don't. I go, why not? Cause, because it's obvious. You don't have private advertising, you don't have religious marketing, you don't have personal messages and, or political messages. And that pretty much is, if you know those four things, then all that's left is community events.
Right.
So, it's, then it's basically easy. What about churches? Well, you can't advertise that Easter service at the Baptist church is ten o'clock. But if the Baptist church was having a Red Cross fund, uh, blood drive, they're just the location. That's a community event.
Right.
So, if you, if they just know that these are the parameters and they know the email address of the tech or staff person, school or city or whoever it is, you get them in the, you know, the first Monday of the month and, and, and that's it. They just email that, that person and that person knows those four parameters and logs them in. They could do the, they could start putting Jubilee in right now, you know, three weeks of Jubilee, two weeks of Jubilee, you know, whatever. And that's, that's how that works. So, we really don't know. We never did ask if, if it would be a city staff person in the first place. We know that Adam has mentioned their IT person who's full-time salary would do that.
Support system.
Support system, is that right?
Yeah.
Because it's better to have somebody that doesn't have a dog in the fight, that doesn't have patrons. These are the rules. If they qualify, they're having a Kiwanis garage sale at DNW this Saturday, you know, that qualifies. Put it on. So, that's, yeah, I wish there was a PDF that spelled it all out, but I couldn't find a community that, that really has it because it just seems so obvious. So.
I, I, I hear what you're saying, but I think if we're gonna have one, we're, we're gonna have to have a written, written policy because then when you have people that are complaining, then you see it's right here in the.
Yeah, it's kind of how you allow some and not the others. We're not the first city to be doing this, so there must be some.
I'm gonna go back to John.
Two, two points in this question for Mr. Peron. So, the base of this policy, this is the city of Wayland, Michigan. It's about to nineteen, two thousand seventeen, Wayland's about our size. But really, if you look at the, the background information, that's really, it speaks to that this, and this is kind of the conundrum of, you know, is it a school side or isn't it a school side? Is it a city sign or isn't it? We're very limited when it's, what it's defined as the city sign. We're very limited on what we can allow. Whether we like it or not, we're very limited. In the former community that I worked in, we had a community rock and there were no policies or procedures for the rock and what can be painted there. So, any and everything had to be painted there.
Right.
So, it's, it's similar to that. It can't be a community message board. Again, I would, I get defer to Mr. Peron and we review the policy and we review the background information. It speaks to like the, well, we'd like to allow individual groups to, you know, advertise certain things they, they can't.
Well, it wouldn't be their own individual thing. I can see if it is a true community event, but maybe that's what there needs to be. It's more of a public, a private partnership on community events. Events that are open to the entire community, not club meetings, things like that.
Okay.
So, maybe that.
So, so for instance, I'm gonna use NISA pancake breakfast.
Yep.
NISA is the entity. It's their own entity, not the city. It's a pancake breakfast that's open to the community. Would that be?
Well, but they're, they're an entity of the city and the city's public, you know, they're.
Kiwanis nut sales, it's sales open to the community. They have different tables in different locations. I'm just throwing down different hypotheticals to get, to really try to drill down.
Well, I think, I would think that's different though. I mean, so if Kiwanis was holding, like at the park, holding an event or like they were just throwing barbecue for fruit or allowing the public to come, that's different. But doing the nut sale, I think is a violation. I don't think we would do that, but they were hosting.
Cause it's fundraiser, okay.
Um, but I think we have to be careful because I, so I would agree if like we took four and changed that to be not chamber of commerce, but did a community events, that's kind of what we're talking about here.
And it has to be truly a community event and not a self-serving, for-profit event.
I think we have to be careful though and that we have to acknowledge that by doing that, we are opening it up even to events that, that the community may not like.
Right.
Correct.
So, there is very, there's a very real possibility that a group could come in hosting an open community event that the public's allowed to. You may not like what their message is or the organization's behind it, but we can't tell them no.
Correct.
So, that's, that's going to have to be something that group has to acknowledge, a possibility.
I would think there's a standard legal verbiage thing. We're not the first people to do this.
Unless they're doing web sites or something else, they're not gonna.
Message signs dot com or something, you know.
So, it's almost going back to when somebody comes in and wants to reserve something at the park and we have to approve those applications. We may have personal ideas about what's going on in the park, but we have to remember that we have to be transparent and fair to anyone that comes through and puts in that application. Yes, we can deny them or not. So, I mean, do we want to get into the weeds with that?
I, my personal opinion is that I, I agree. I think that the whole point of this, right, is that we are supposed to be using the sign to promote community events.
Yes.
So, yes, there's clearly a risk involved in opening that up, but if the inherent purpose is foils organizations to be able to promote actual community events, then I think we have, you, you take it. Cause otherwise, what are we doing this for? I mean, what's the point?
Exactly.
So, I mean, I think, I don't know that at the moment, cause I don't really want to rush language here. I don't know at the moment, we're ready.
I don't think so either.
I think that, I mean, I think we have figured out what we want and maybe this is another, we just have to, you know, hand this off in next time. So, I think my idea would be that four would change to strip out chamber of commerce, the language from there. And that four would now say something to the effect of that we would allow, um, open community events that are open to, community events that are open to the public is essentially what we'd be going for there.
And.
Which I think is what the whole point of four was to begin with.
Correct. So, what, what I think we need to do is I'm gonna ask for a motion to table indefinitely so that we can make sure that we get the language correct. I would also say that if we're going to go down that road with community events, we have to, and Tim, this is where your expertise would come in, I'm assuming, that we would have to tailor it, that it could not use, you know, obscenities or any type of, you know, language like that, you know, that it would be vetted before it would be approved to go on for, you know, something that's not gonna be offensive, once somebody drives down the street.
They do reserve the right to add in all messages already. And again, this is supposed to be government speech. This is the city's speech.
Right.
Not necessarily opening this up to the public to put anything they want on it. This is only to advertise.
Community events.
Community and activities and events open to the general public.
Sure. So, and in the park, music, music in the park, Thursday evenings, that's a community event that's open.
Yep.
National night out, which is part of, you know, it's a, it's a community-wide event. Jubilee, those types of things.
So, then you get into a little bit like, like during the Jubilee, let's say like the Rotary puts on.
I don't think you could drill down. It would just be Jubilee.
Okay.
The Rotary's duck race couldn't be.
You would just say Jubilee is this week.
Jubilee is this week.
Jubilee twentieth through the twenty-sixth of June, if not individual events.
Because Jubilee does their own posting of signs and schedules and everything throughout the community. This is just, yeah, this is a thirty-thousand-foot view message.
Well, just remember that the technology makes all of that so easy. You could say, if one Jubilee event is that night, all day, you could say it's tonight is, you know, the, whatever it is. And that's the whole beauty of the technology that you said, oh, that's tonight. You drive by, yeah, I forgot about that. But just Jubilee, you might as well just have a banner up.
Right.
We're just trying to figure out how detailed we can get here.
Right. But really general defeats the whole purpose.
I think that's why. Right. And so, I think we have to table this.
Define language.
And define the language.
Before we table it, just so that we give, make sure, we want to make sure everybody's given whatever they thought for general direction before we table it.
Yeah, I didn't say we were done. Yeah, discussion.
Yeah, no, no, discussion, yeah. So, go ahead, Dan.
I guess my, my big thing before it comes back, is I'd like to see, and I know I mentioned this earlier, is the, a, a little more detail on who's gonna be in charge of updating. How's that gonna be? Cause the two, the two main entities we're talking about, removing number four, if it's a school event, will the school be doing the update? If it's, you know, whatever, whatever that is, I'd like to, to see that in here for how we're updating it. And since we're talking about, sorry, now I'm, I'm trying to find it here. What was mentioned at some point in here, things that have a charge on, well, we're, things, things that we're charging admission for would be lowest priority. How, how does that work? Because like obviously the, uh, the boys' regional basketball playoff game tonight, well, it's a seven-dollar charge to get in there. Does that, does that put it, you know, how, how does that work?
Well, so, I mean, that, that wouldn't affect the community aspect, right? Because that's still a government entity. So, that the basketball game wouldn't necessarily cause problems for what we were just discussing.
No, that's different from what we were just discussing, but like they had a priority for what gets first priority on the sign was mentioned in here. And things that you're charging for entry was mentioned would be last priority. I, I don't, I guess I don't really know how that works.
One last thing. I know Adam's not here, cause I know where he is. But there's a difference between just announcing events and marketing. He's looking at this, great to turn him around, and then their marketing budget that tells the community all the good things we're doing. Not that there's girls JV volleyball at four o'clock. It's our congratulations, our middle school quiz bowl is going to the nationals, you know, you know, you know, blah, blah, blah. That's, that's just telling the community how wonderful things are going on. Not necessarily dating constant stuff because all those parents know that, knowing that stuff is. So, he's looking at it as a difference between schedules and marketing. And he's thinking, he wants to commit dollars for marketing.
And the, and the school will be able to do that. I mean, so that's the kind of the difference we're talking about here is that for Kiwanis, it would be different because they're not the school, but the school is a government entity. So, the school can very well, all day long, say, hey, look, our JV team just made it to nationals. Sweet, yeah, we're doing it. Whatever they go to. You know, so the school will always have the ability. So, I think he won't be disappointed in his ability to broadcast cause he'll still be able to make an offense like that.
Okay.
What do you say, he? What do you mean by that?
Uh, superintendent.
Superintendent Skina that was here last council meeting. Um, John, you said that this background, this came from Windup?
Wayland.
Wayland? Would it be possible to reach out and get like a couple sample messages of what they put on there? I think that would be helpful for us to look at, you know, what are some of the message requests that they get? You know, that would be helpful for us. Like, you know, Dan's, you know, we need to drill down to figure out who's gonna have the responsibility. We have to find out from the company if there's multiple users that can, you know, log work, you know, login and password to be able to update it. If somebody's not able to, who, who's that backup person? I think we've had very, very good discussion on this. And I think there's still some things that need to be.
So, my thought was is that we've got these prioritized as who has priority one, two, three as far as posted stuff. But if I'm not mistaken, this is a scrolling sign, right? It's gonna change every thirty seconds to a minute or whatever the case may be.
Change every six seconds.
So, there's the multiple messages on there.
So, if you had, you know, if you had four things from the city and three from the school and two from the Jubilee, it doesn't really matter what the priority word is, right? It's all gonna scroll through.
It's, right. Exactly.
You're not gonna deny, you know, we're not gonna, you can only have five today, so.
And the nice thing is during the summer, the school will have nothing.
Right.
And it could be all Jubilee for two weeks.
Alright, or you just get in the park. Terry, you have one last.
Is it gonna affect your fundraising, the fact that we don't have a policy yet?
I don't think that'll affect it. I think it's just basically, is there a commitment to do this?
Right. Right.
And, but you don't want to ask a fundraiser who's not gonna be, you know, that's restricted by the policy either. So, that's, that's why you're gonna table it.
The big picture thing that says community events. Is that sufficient for your donors, do you think?
Yeah, because most of the community events are not put on by the state really at all. They're all put on by volunteer groups.
Yeah, okay. Alright. I'm looking for a motion for item B, please.
I'll move to table this action item indefinitely.
Alright, do I have support? I need support. Alright, Holly, we call the roll for item B. Lanning?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Seabolt?
Yes.
Rhymes?
Yes.
Gilroy? Alright, moving on to our last action item, it is the GPS equipment replacement purchase. And Scott, thank you for the memo that you put in here. So, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Okay. Really briefly, there was a piece of equipment that was unforeseen and it was gonna fail on us. It's a ten thousand dollar piece of equipment that was purchased during the saw grant in two thousand sixteen. We use it on a fairly regular basis. We have tried for months to try and figure a way to get this thing to work. It has to do with the Windows ten operating system that got changed over with all the computers and all that stuff. That completely made all this equipment obsolete. It will not communicate, it will not work anymore. We have tried with software people and everything else with patches and it's, we thought we might get it, but it didn't. So, we finally decided after a lot of work that we need to search for a new piece of equipment. We did the research for that, found the best working piece of equipment, put that forward to you. It's a much simpler process. Now, it doesn't have all the post-processing from the satellite systems. You used to have to, you know, do your fieldwork and then come back in and do all this number crunching conversion stuff with the computers. It's like real-time information. So, it's actually better and, you know, we'll be able to locate things directly, you know, right away. So, we found a way to make this fit within existing budget because we're not doing meter replacements during the COVID time period. So, we didn't want to buy more meters because we would have more stuff in stock that would be aging and not being used.
Right.
So, we postponed those purchases for another fiscal year anyways, so we can do this without asking for an additional one.
Alright, so it's in budget. It's going to meet your needs. Any questions? Alright.
I have one. I have one question.
Tom?
So, the only part I noticed about this whole thing is the, that they suggested maybe pulling the money from the water and sewer funds to fund this, and I know you say we've got like some money floating because of the meters situation, but, I mean, it was just a few months ago that we voted to take some money from the general fund to support the water and sewer, to not do a.
To do the rate increase.
Increase, so I guess I'm a little concerned that, that now we want to pull some, some money from that fund, I don't know if there's any other option, a different fund, the general fund, somewhere else where we could pull the money from to do this, it sounds like it's an important piece of equipment that we need, have to have, can't be without.
It's actually primarily used for the water and sewer system.
Right, it's for your drive-bys when you do meter rates, right?
Well, it, it helps locate things, and it helps us build the systems and the GIS system. We have a lot of work still to do, we've got the main pipelines, but we have a lot of service line work to still do.
Right, John, do you want to elaborate as far as that fund and, and it being pulled?
Sure, I'd be happy to, so, a couple things, yeah, you can always use general fund to supplement water and sewer, but in, in this particular case, there was a, you know, around $10,000 that were allocated for meters that we don't have to purchase, so even with the loan forgiveness, I think it was the water loan forgiveness, the general fund did, so this money is budgeted in, in the operating income for both of those.
So, we can hold out the, the money that's originally allocated for the meters can then be prolonged until, until next year, we can run into the budget for next year.
That's correct, yeah, yeah, and we don't miss a beat, because we have, it's because we were doing meter installs because of COVID, because we're getting into those houses.
Sounds good.
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
I have to bring in from Windows 10 to Windows 11, because I had to, now I have to buy a new printer. This is not an unexpected thing.
All right, if there's no other questions for Scott or for John, I'm looking for a motion for this.
Make a motion for approval of the purchase of EOS Arrow Gold RTK system and accessories for GPS survey and data collection in the amount not to exceed $9,794 from Discovery Management Group LLC.
Thank you, Dan, do I have support?
Support.
Thank you, bold, if there's no further discussion, Holly, we call the roll, please.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Hansen?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Siebel?
Yes.
Reins?
All right, moving along our agenda, we do not have any discussion items for the evening, we did not receive any correspondence, so I will go right into our department head reports, and I'll go right to John.
Thank you, Mayor Gilroy, members of council, I did include a written report, I did want to talk a little bit about the kayak project, we did rebid that project, and I, I will tell you, it's usually not always the best solution, but these are funny times with construction, but anyway, we did do that, it was publicly advertised, we did receive only one bid, it's significantly higher than even the bid last time, so a couple of things that have to happen, we do have a DDA meeting tomorrow night, we're going to talk to the DDA about the bids and report back, so this is primarily a DDA project, we have, Scott and I have met with, at least virtually have met with the LAT, and then with the contractor about what we could possibly value engineering, some aspects of it still have mostly the same project, and, and bring that, that project back in line, so more updates on that, the grant for the county, we, we do have until October 2022 to expend the funds, we get asked for an extension, I don't, I don't think that will be necessary, and I was, I don't think we can really rebid this thing again, because it's just going to lead us to more prices, so, so we'll sharpen our pencil, get creative, and figure out a way to make the project happen.
All right.
And then, and then on top of that, I do have a couple of meetings set up with, with some of you this week, and, you know, I'll catch the rest of you hopefully in the next couple of weeks, and we'll keep moving forward, but thank you.
Thank you, and just one thing to note on John's memo to us, that we are going to be looking to set dates for our work session for late April, early May to discuss our goals and objectives, so just make sure to, when Holly reaches out with dates, to get back to her so that we can get this on, we've missed this over the past couple of years due to COVID, and it's time for us to circle back around and, and meet and discuss where we want to be going.
Will this be an additional meeting?
Yes, yeah, I remember when I, when we were at Parks and Recreation, I told them about work sessions, yes, so Chief is not here, but I'm assuming everything's good, and he's holding down the fort over at the high school because of the basketball tournament, so we wish our Hornets well and all the other teams that are playing. You did receive in your packet our billing report from Leyston County, so if you do have questions regarding any work or activities that are going on, you can always direct those to John, and he can get those answers for you, so with that being said, I'll go into committee, subcommittee reports, anybody want to share any information?
Parks and Recreation, yes, well, this, the kayak thing is sort of in our area, it's related to that, and there's also a kayak rack that might get put in down by St. Mary's, where the kayak entry point is, there's an Eagle Scout that wants to do a kayak rack, where you put your kayak there and you could store it, and you put a, put this lock on it or something like that, rent the cable lock from the, from the city, and then you don't have to carry your kayak down to the place every time you want to use it, so, what a cool idea.
Yeah, great Eagle Scout project, hopefully it comes through.
Yeah, I'll, I'll be the one who read the email.
Great. Yeah, it was really, it was a good, good meeting.
It was.
Earl probably thought that it lasted longer than I wish it up, because I showed up, and asked a lot of questions, so I told him to get used to it this year, but anyways, any other, yeah, right, so, any other one, anybody else have an update from their meetings? All right.
John, you have a meeting?
We did have a meeting, there was nothing of significance to report.
All right. Oh, yes, it's all about Noah, he's reelected this.
Noah wasn't elected to, he's the personnel committee.
Personnel committee, congratulations, all right, moving along then, audience participation, do your children want to say hello?
You guys want to say hi?
Hi! All right, council member comments, I'll start down here on the sun with Brandon?
I'm good.
Dan? Noah?
I'm good.
Terry?
Good.
Chuck?
Good.
Tom?
I do appreciate the, the city and Parks and Recreation Committee and Earl and everybody working as hard as they did when this got submitted to attempt to answer a lot of the questions that we've had, kind of building, I know we've still got a lot of questions kind of left, but they did put forth some significant effort into putting our minds at ease, I appreciate that.
Great, yes, so, we just sprang forward yesterday, it is light longer, so I would just ask, as you're driving through our little pocket neighborhoods, to be very aware of walkers, the weather's getting nicer, families are out with children, pets, so just be conscious of that as it continues to get lighter, longer each day, we are kind of rolling into the next few months of getting closer to the end of school, I mean, I know it was just, spring break is coming up, but before you know it, it's going to be June, so just always be conscious of the buses out there that are carrying our community children, just enjoy spring, hopefully, you know, Michigan won't surprise us with any other snowstorms, as we've got some warm weather over these next two weeks, and that's it, thank you, everybody, for your efforts with all of your boards that you are attending, and bringing back good information and very good dialogue this evening on the digital board side, I know we will get it figured out, with that, I will go ahead and adjourn at 7:58.